All right, I'd like to call the regular business meeting in the Board of Education from Monday, May 23rd to order. If we could all stand, please, and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, good evening, everybody. Can I have a roll call, please?
Steve and Arthur. Jim Batsen.
Here.
Alice Dellicoli.
Here.
Capruti.
Here.
Aaron Hunstad. Here. Alan Maurer. Here. Dr. Rassler.
Here. Okay, so we know for the record, Steve and Arthur is absent tonight. Our agenda, we have an educational presentation this evening with the Special Olympics, so welcome to everybody in the audience. A brief president's report where we'll recognize our outgoing student school board representatives, we'll also welcome our incoming student school board representatives. Then we'll have reports from, one last report from one existing student school board rep, and we're going to quickly initiate one more. I think I got that right. And then the superintendent's report, the consent vote agenda, updates from the program and personnel committee, as well as the facilities and finance committee, and then there will not actually be a proper committee update, there's nothing to update, special education district of Lake County, Illinois Association of School Boards, and then we will wrap it up. Okay? Anything else? Okay, our educational presentation this evening.
Yes, tonight, at this time, I'd like to introduce Andy Compton, who is going to share with us some of the achievements of our students who have participated in the Special Olympics this year.
Do I need this, or do I not?
Yes.
I need it, okay. All right. Well, this year, we've got a lot of our athletes with us, and we had an incredible year. I'm going to start by talking about what they did, and I'll introduce them to you, the ones that are here. And I've got a few athletes that want to say something, a few parents that would like to say something, so I'll keep as quick as I can so they can say it, I don't need to listen to me. So, first off, thank you very much for your support with everything, we certainly appreciate it, and again, we honor you guys with what we do on the fields and play, and they've done an amazing job of doing that this year. So their way of saying thank you is all that clinging behind me, they've got a lot of medals. This year, we have qualified 11 athletes for the state summer games, which is coming up in two weeks, that is the most we've ever had qualify. They're going in swimming, bocce, and in track and field. It's outstanding. The next thing on that is we've got eight athletes that qualified for the state winter games, and that's the most we've ever had, which is awesome. Only problem was the blizzard hit, so we couldn't go, but still, eight people qualifying, outstanding accomplishment. Our basketball team finished up with a silver medal at the area games, just missed out on state. Same, the floor hockey team won a silver medal at state. From outstanding performances from these guys, they shut down one of the top scorers in the Special Olympics to do that, it was unbelievable. We took the whole crew, went to the United Center again, which was unbelievable, playing for 15 minutes before the Bulls, who hopefully will win the world championship here, but it's really neat to be there with everybody, a great experience. Eight of our athletes, yeah, seven of our athletes qualified for state in two sports or more, five of our athletes qualified in three sports or more, and one qualified for four trips to downstate. So, an amazing year, we won 78 medals, and we've still got bowling and summer games. Our record is, I think, 98, and we didn't have the winter games, we've got two to come, so we might be able to get over 100, which would be really cool, and they've earned it. So we've got 17 bronze medals, 28 silvers, and 33 golds this year. That's just an outstanding performance, and we couldn't be happier. I've got to bring up one person, though, to show you something. Come here, bring that bag. This is Melissa Sills-Dorff, and by the way, this is her last year with us, but over the years, this is what she's accomplished. Come here. Hold this bread, pull out.
Oh!
All right?
Wow!
If she couldn't put them on her neck, she'd be like this. But, just an amazing, she's been winning medal after medal, and that's what, what about six years of medals? Unbelievable. Do you have a few other people that were leaving? But let me introduce some people that are here. Melissa Sills-Dorff, first of all, should be leaving.
What's in them?
Ellie Goldberg, which is one of our, we had seven new athletes this year, which is the most we've ever had too, which is outstanding. So, we love having the new people, and they were great, and their families were tremendous. Austin Josen, Josen House. Anne Jennings, Michelle Shepley, Nick Sicari, Trevor Furman, and John Surveig.
Trevor Surveig.
Surveig, sorry. All, one, two, three, four, and five, and six, or six of the seven new members that are with us this year, and those are medals they've accomplished this year alone. So, outstanding, John, and hey, Ronald, after you guys. All right. I'm going to let them talk, they might go on for a long time. You guys will be all right. We're going to get two athletes, all right? Anne, come on up here. You.
Hi, I'm Anne Jennings, I just want to say thanks to the coaches, because they're amazing, and they're helping me, so I love them so much, feel like my family. They're amazing, I'm touched to have them.
Thank you! Bye, peace!
All right, and one of our, one of our new members, Nick, come on up. He's, he's dressed.
My name's Nick Sicari, and here's something, this help is helping me lose a lot weight, just because I was on the verge of diabetes, okay? I was literally about to take insulin, and this was like, I just had to save my life. So I thank all the chairman and the coaches, and give them a round of applause.
All right, and we have a couple of parents that would like to say something. You guys.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mark Furman, this is my son Trevor, he's my athlete, he's a freshman at LHS. This has been our first year in the program, and it's been absolutely extraordinary, so I want to thank you for your support. It's been, it's been fabulous experience, it really gives these kids an opportunity to do something that they wouldn't be able to participate in traditionally, and it allows them to kind of show what they're really made of and who they really are, so it's a really unique experience, and we're so thrilled to be a part of it, we're so thrilled that you've been supporting it, I think it's fantastic, we hope that we'll be able to continue to support it over the years. As you can see, we have generations of new kids coming in, we have generations of wonderful kids that are leaving us, and it's just been a fantastic thing to be a part of as a family member. I also want to thank the coaches, the leadership that they provide, the love they show for the kids. I've never seen anything like it, these guys spend so much of their time, weekends, it's wonderful, so I want to thank everyone for that, so thank you.
Good evening, thank you for allowing us to share some of these things with you. My name's Susan Goldberg, I am a parent of a senior and freshman at Libertyville High School, and I want to thank the board for their continued support of Special Olympics. This is an incredibly meaningful program, not only do these kids get to be on the team, they get to support their school, they get to show their colors and be, you know, representing the school the way the kids in fine arts and the other sports, and that's a very important part for our kids. I also want to recognize the wonderful work of our coaches, Andy Compton and Coach Jim, they are really special people, they're unique people that we are all grateful to have in their life, and we hope that you recognize what a resource we have in our coaches, so thank you again for your support.
Thanks. Hey, feelings mutual, we enjoy doing it, and it's a lot of fun, a lot of fun. Thanks for the kind words, appreciate it. Jim, Jim needs to be recognized, come on, stand up for a second, there he is.
I just want to thank you all for all your support of the school board, and I really, I get the much out of it as the kids get out of it, and thanks again for everything.
Thank you, Jim's my right-hand man for what, 10 years now, so this has been a big journey we've taken together, and it's been a lot of fun, and we hope it just keeps going and going. One thing I would like to end with is Mrs. Goldberg didn't steal my thunder, which I'm very happy for, her daughter, you know, every year we have like a big, there's moments all over the place that happen that just touch you, and they're just warm your heart and whatnot, and every year it happens, throughout the year there's something, but this one was the most recent, and it happened at the spring games over Lakeshore High School just about a month ago. A lot of the kids already qualified for state, and Ellie was coming up, and it was her chances to win, she hadn't gone downstate yet, they just missed probably three or four times getting downstate. So she's up in the 50 meter, and boom, she comes out of the blocks, and she's just got it all going, and lo and behold, she's got gold. And, awesome experience, right? We've got, oh, one more athlete for us to take downstate, it's great, she's so happy, well, that's wonderful, everybody wins gold every now and again, that's terrific, well she comes back and wins one again in the next race, and all of a sudden, I see mom and mom very, very excited about what had just happened, and unbeknownst to me, there had been quite a bit of therapy to get Ellie to walk and to run throughout the years, and a lot of money and a lot of time had gone into that, and I'm glad I didn't know it, because I'd have been sobbing the whole time while that went on, but when I saw that at the end, you know, the year just heart glows, and what an unbelievable moment as, you know, they embraced, and Ellie was so excited to go, and it's just moments like that that just keep us going, but, oh my gosh, it happens a lot, but that's the most recent, and it was an incredible moment that I didn't even know about, and then when it happened, wow. So, thank you. Ellie? Thank you very much. And thank you all athletes, because every time, that's what our reward is, I mean, Jim and I say it all the time, you just see things that you never see before, and it's just really cool, and without fail, I mean, it's just awesome, so every year, so we get it back every time we go out, so the time we put in is well spent, and it's just, you can't get enough of it. So, thank you for letting us do that, and we've got a few of these shirts left, so a few people need to get this in the room, but our team name's The Storm. So one of our team, one of our team moms thought of a good saying, since we're going to be following all the, we're Storm Chasers. So, I've got a few left over here, I'm not sure on the sizes, apprentice, we can give you the first shot. All right, you get one.
Add the first shot.
All right, but we've got four left over, if you guys want some more, by all means, let me know.
Well, thank you, thank you so much.
Great, but thanks again, guys, and appreciate it. Do you want to picture?
Yeah, I think we want to get a picture with your whole group.
Well, before we do that, Andy, first of all, again, thank you very much, all of you, and congratulations to the students, we are so pleased at your progress and your success, and we're more than happy to support the wonderful work that you're all doing. Andy, could we ask the other parents and friends to stand up so we can recognize them that are here this evening? Would you, would you please stand up if you're a parent or friend? Neighbor?
Grandparent.
Of the students, grandparents. Thank you. Now, let's take some pictures. All in a lull, we may, come on, come on, board members. Should we swing to you so you can?
No, I mean, go for Mary, I'll be okay.
I'll let him be.
Do you want to move the electric? Want me to move it?
I can't see Ellen. There you go. Okay, now I can't see the young lady in the middle, I can't. There you go. We can squeeze it.
Yeah, yeah, we'll squeeze it over. You got a solid there.
I got it, awesome. Take a couple.
You're just a bachelor.
Yeah, normally books to both sides.
Did I miss anything?
Yeah.
Now it's time for the president's report.
I need another school board representative, right?
All right, next, we'd like to recognize our outgoing student school board representatives, and I understand we have a few people missing today, so we're going to start with Vernon Hills High School. And first, I'd like to recognize Andrew Wood, who I believe is sitting in the background, or in the, in the audience. Our alternate at Vernon Hills High School this year, Andrew, thank you for all your hard work during the year.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next, Vernon Hills Student School Board Representative for this year, Nitya Bhagavatula. School student school board co-representatives, we had two representatives from Libertyville this year, and both are not here due to other conflicts with other high school programs. First would be Hannah Maurey.
Andy.
Yep, and then second, Eric Engstrom, so just a round of applause for all their hard work.
Durinka, did you want to read the statement now?
Yes, Hannah, Hannah wrote something for everybody, she says, "To District 128 School Board Members and staff, honors night is this evening at Libertyville, so unfortunately I couldn't be with you this evening for my last school board meeting. I wanted to thank you all for this wonderful experience and opportunity that has been given to me. I have had a wonderful experience this year, and I feel like I have a much better understanding of what goes on every day to keep our schools going, and I hope in return that I have helped you all hear a little bit more about the student perspective than you otherwise would have. Next year I'll be attending Vanderbilt University to study human and organizational development. I also plan to minor in French and hopefully study abroad in France. I think I can speak for Libertyville's class of 2011 when I say that we have had an incredible senior year, and we are so grateful for all you've done to make this, to make it possible. Hopefully I'll see you all around in the future, and I'll keep you updated if anything particularly exciting happens for me in the future. Good luck to the next, to next year's representatives, Durinka and Christian, have a wonderful summer, and I wish you all the best in the coming years. With warmest regards, Ken Amari." And Eric would also like to thank everybody he has had, he's grown so much, and he's really thankful and for the opportunity that he's been given.
Great. All right, just again, final thanks, so really appreciate it, I know for all of us, I think, and all it means is just great to hear the student perspective on how things are going in the high school. I know I always appreciate lunch and our chance to have some casual conversation about the things that are on students' minds, so again, with the very busy schedule that I know you guys keep, thanks for all of your hard work, commitment, and dedication to this, this effort, we sincerely appreciate it. Okay, moving on to next year, as I said, I think in the last meeting, one of the more challenging assignments in this role is to have to choose the school board representatives, and let me tell you, it's always a tough call, but I think that's true because we get such great, great kids that apply. And I think this year we have four really good students that are, that are going to help us out next year. From Libertyville High School, Christian Vitor.
Christian, he's at the office.
Okay. And Durinka Sutik, Durinka, welcome.
Thank you.
From Vernon Hills High School, the student school board representative will be Kate Lee. And our alternate will be Shylee Garrett. So thanks to all of you for volunteering for next year, we look forward to the opportunity to meet you and meet with you often next year.
And Pat, before we move on, me, Ellen and I, and Dr. Scott, had the great pleasure today to have lunch with our outgoing board reps and our incoming board reps, and we had a great conversation, and it's going to, very sad to see our current board reps go, of course, but we've got a great group coming in, and so we're looking forward to having that informal dialogue with you, as well as you serving that community at the board table, so thank you again, welcome.
And I know you guys think you're about to start new endeavors and how long that's going to take, some of us have been here to see those people actually not only go to college, but graduate from college and then get jobs, so it goes by very quickly. All right, reports from our student school board. We'll start.
Yeah. The month of May started out with AP testing, which is always a fun two weeks, but in the middle of those two weeks, we had Metamorphosis, which was our spring play performed by our Backlight Theatre Company. It was a bigger cast than usual, so a lot of people really enjoyed watching all the students act, and it was a good show with Greek mythology. Also in the middle of that, wind ensemble went to University of Illinois, and they actually won superstate, so that was really nice, they won two years ago as well, so next year they're going to be the honors band, which was really good news. After AP testing, we had prom, our theme this year was Come Fly With Me at the Stonegate Banquet Hall in Hoffman Estates. I can speak for all the seniors, and I know everyone had a good night, it was a really good location, everyone had a lot of fun the entire weekend, from Saturday all the way to Monday, I know everyone said they had a good time. The Oikasus show was also the following week, it went outstanding, this was the first time they actually had a group of boys also perform during the show, and that was a change, and I know people really enjoyed watching both the entire company perform and even the smaller groups. Math team got third at state, that was at the beginning of May, and then also, we've had a good sports season, last weekend girls had their state meet, and Callie Gallagher earned all-state honors in the Mile, as did the four-by-four team of Ally Peacock, Ally Tran, Taylor Crew, and Taylor Pearson, so those girls, they did an awesome job at Eastern last weekend. We had our last assembly, the spring recognition assembly last Friday, they summed up all the sports and the activities, and we just all celebrated the end of the year together, and this Thursday during the day is the honors assembly, so it's weird to think that it's already my last year of high school, but I think it's, it has been a really good year, and I want to thank the board as well, I'm hearing what Hannah said, it has been a pleasure working with everyone, and it's been, it's been a cool experience learning what goes on with the board, and then I also gave you a little bit of the student perspective, and I know I've learned a lot, and next year I'm going to the University of Virginia, and I'm going to be studying economics, and then I hope to apply to their commerce school for the third and fourth year, so, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, is that?
Libertyville, I didn't hear.
All right. Superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening. As the students have mentioned, it has been an incredible year this year, and it's always great to share the good news, so we've had a lot more good news since our meeting last month, so I'd like to share a little bit more with you this evening. First, the Libertyville High School and Vernon Hills High School wind ensembles won the 3A and 2A divisions respectively in the 2011 superstate competition, and I think Ellen would agree with me that in the, in the band world, those are state championships. So both of our schools won state championships in 3A and 2A, which is unheard of in the state, so just again, congratulations to, you know, everybody involved in our fine arts program and our folks with the band programs, it's just absolutely incredible. The following VHS students were named May Cougar Class Act Award recipients, Brad Baumann, Guvar Kumar, Morgan Lichtenstein, Jeremy Brazil, Kyle Shremes, Alyssa Welter, Chris Culver, Jackie Flores, Taylor Rigwood, Victoria Hagan, Marcella Sardo, Curtis Howard Locker, Parrish Ashford, and Dilpreet Sareena. The LHS April Students of the Month were Griffin Adams, Katerina Sabatic, Paige Hopper, Nikki Antrim Endart, Kevin Taylor, Dave Clavy, Anne McKeonan, Michelle Cindy, and Easton Hutch, so congratulations to those students. LHS students Caitlin Woodard and Nikki Antrim Endart were recognized for their outstanding achievements in the school and community at the Illinois Principals Association's annual Student Recognition Breakfast, which was held at Vernon Hills High School, by the way, it's kind of its new permanent home, so we're happy to host that event. LHS senior Lucy Vernazco and sophomore Jessica Yin each earned first-place honors in the prestigious Illinois Association of Teachers of English Best of Poetry and Prose Contest. Lucy's short story, "An Empty Glass," and Jessica's poem, "Forbidden Snow," will be published in the Fall 2011 English Bulletin, representing poetry and prose by the best young writers in the state. VHS senior Moya Chin was awarded the John Benson Award, this is a very prestigious award and only given to two seniors in the entire North Suburban Math League, which includes 58 schools in Chicago and the North Suburban area. John Benson founded NMSL and was president until 2008, when he retired. The 2009-10 VHS yearbook staff and advisor Patricia Nora received a silver medal from the Columbia Scholastic Press Association, as well as the Golden Eagle Award, and a number of blue ribbons from the Northern Illinois Scholastic Press Association. Staff members were David Valentino, Sam Wrong, Carly Schles, Joel Bissell, Lindsay Antes, Alyssa Nugent, Vanessa Nagel, Jackie Preston, and Ellie Silver. Two students were honored in this month's Lake County Exceptional Children's Week Ceremony. The Yes I Can Student Award is given to outstanding special needs students in a variety of categories. This year's winners are Candace Krenninger, who was nominated by Alice Leeflad in the area of art, and Trevor Furman, who was nominated by Linda Ward in the area of academics. At the recent Best of the Best Show held at the State of Illinois Building in Chicago, three D128 art students received awards for their artwork. VHS student Tamara Lang received a second-place award for her sculpture. VHS student Mikey Harmon received a first-place award for his design in digital imagery, and LHS student Brooke Balby received a first place in 3D and was awarded an $800 scholarship for her medal piece. Libertyville High School dance teacher Erin Brown has been named Illinois Dance Teacher of the Year by the Illinois Association of Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance, and Erin will now move on to a Midwest competition, which is part of a broader national competition, so we're very proud of her, congratulations, that's a, again, an incredible recognition. The Cats Against Cancer Club cosponsored a brain tumor 5K walk on Sunday, May 15th, there were 234 walkers, and the walk generated $13,839 for the Musella Foundation. The VHS DECA Club recently participated in the 65th Annual International Career Development Conference in Orlando, Florida, April 30th through May 3rd. Erin Bolandowski, Gabe Cotton, and Lauren Brudy in Financial Literacy Promotion Plan. Derek McConawitz in Entrepreneurship Independent Business Plan. Jessica Akalis and Marco Philman International Business Plan. Elvin John, Christina Crowes, and Patrick Chupak in Sports and Entertainment Operations Research. At the grand awards session, Patrick Chupak was awarded the Leonard Pacla Dick Memorial Scholarship in the amount of $1,000. 2011 Physics Bowl results are in, and LHS physics teacher Mike Bush recently announced that LHS AP Physics B students placed first in their region, which is Illinois and Iowa, for Division One, and AP Physics C students placed first among all competing schools, which is the U.S., Canada, China, Japan, and the Republic of Korea in Division Two. So, congratulations to all students and staff for their outstanding work this month. Next on the superintendent's report tonight, we just wanted to do a very quick debrief of our recent School Finance 101, Charting the Course for the Future presentation, which was held on Wednesday, May 4th, at the Libertyville Village Hall. In the presentation, as we always do, the first part of the presentation is a real nice overview of the fundamentals of school finance and the language that goes with that. Second part of the presentation is presenting the district's long-range financial plan and the dynamics that go into that plan. And the final part of the evening is really question-and-answer session with the audience who is in attendance. All three of the presentations that we've done so far, I think, have really been great vehicles for information for the public and an opportunity for them to learn more. And just as importantly, for us to learn from them through question-and-answer session. But I think we all felt especially good about this particular session because the last part of the program really moved to dialogue. We had some good conversation with our public about the status of the district, where the district is headed, and our commitment to ensure 25 years down the line that the students that will be coming to this district will have the same access to outstanding teaching, excellent programs, and great supports moving forward. And Bill Ratsor, and of course, Alex Delapali, and Pat were there from the board. Yasmin Data and Alex are the humans part of the presentation that evening. I want to thank all of them, and if any of you have any comments you'd like to make about the presentation at night, then you can certainly jump in here.
It was very enjoyable. It's really good to see that the community is getting it. It was very nice to actually talk about the plan and see them understanding and engaging with us in that Q and A. So, I think it's good, and I hope we have more opportunities to do that.
I also thought it was very good, well-attended, and a lot of good questions. You?
Yeah, I think the kind we made the other night was we had a lot of young parents. Most of grade-school parents looking forward to their kids coming here, which will be great for that.
Well, and the good news again is that we have another presentation coming up on Wednesday, June 1st, which is a week from this Wednesday, and that will be at 7:00 PM at the Vernon Hills Village Hall. So, it's another opportunity for people to come out to a location that's outside of the school district. And we really want to express our thanks to the mayors and the village administrators and the village boards for their assistance in working with us to provide us a location off of school grounds to have these meetings. We certainly enjoy a wonderful partnership with the villages that we serve, and this is just another good example of that. So, we hope to see a lot of the public at that meeting. And I will close this part this evening by mentioning again that it is the intention of the board and the district administration to be totally transparent with the district's finances. So, we encourage our public to attend our Facilities and Finance Committee meetings, which are generally on the second Monday of the month, and order to attend the board meetings to interact with the board and the administration. We do want to hear from the public. We want you to be part of the conversation moving forward, and you are always welcome at District 128 to be part of that conversation. So, again, thanks to everyone. Yas and Alex, great job, as always, on the presentation. So, next on the superintendent's report this evening is, as our veteran board members know, at this time of the year, we also... We have to go on our amended final school calendar. We've included that in your board packet, and based on the information that we have, we would recommend that you adopt the final school calendar for this school year.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the school calendar?
I make a motion to approve the amended school calendar presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delipali?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munsteh?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, the consent vote agenda is listed in your... Was listed in your packet. If I could request a motion to approve the consent vote agenda as attached, please. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munsteh?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, the consent vote agenda is listed in your... Was listed in your packet. If I could request a motion to approve the consent vote agenda attached, please. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Delipali?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munsteh?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, the consent vote agenda is listed in your... Was listed in your packet. If I could request a motion to approve the consent vote agenda attached, please. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munsteh?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next, Program and Personnel Committee update chairperson Mauer.
First, we have word policy, one word policy for a second reading and adoption. This policy sets the 260 exemption from physical activity. There have been no changes since the first reading. We need a motion to approve that.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Munsteh?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delipali?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munsteh?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have a request for the 2011-12 textbooks in the amount of $153,848.26. Would you like to make a motion to approve that?
I approve the motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delipali?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munsteh?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Third, we have some educational tool requests. So, we'll promote to approve those field trips.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delipali?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munsteh?
Aye.
Mauer? Aye.
And finally, we have a request for approval to employ a list of... A list of staff. employment of employees. You've got certified staff replacement hires, educational support staff replacement hires, and some coaching extracurricular activity hires.
These are hires that have been made since the committee meeting. That's why you're voting them on as a group under PMP.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delipali?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munsteh?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
This concludes the Program and Personnel Committee report.
Our Facilities and Finance Committee board member, Alex Delapali.
Yeah, we have two items tonight. Jesse, I believe you have... If you could summarize the first one, the carpet replacement?
Yes. Let me summarize. We are going to be replacing the carpets in the first-floor administration wing and first-floor classrooms at Vernon Hills High School. We had... I'd like the board this evening to accept the base bid from Libertyville Tile and Carpet in the amount of $76,064. I would also like the board to reject the alternate bid for some further first-floor classrooms and offices. We are going to, if you approve that, go out for a rebid on the alternate for a bid opening on the 15th of June to replace them with carpet tiles. We want to try to see if it'll work in those areas because we are talking about smaller offices, some dressing rooms, and I believe that there's a lot of waste in these rooms by putting regular sheets of carpet down and cutting them. So, we want to try. By allowing us to use FY11 and FY12 dollars in our capital plan, we were able to put together $60,000 from each year or $120,000. So, we would hope that the carpet tiles bid comes in somewhere close to $50,000 that we have left over by rejecting the bid, the alternate bid.
Does that mean we will be saving, so to speak, $50,000?
No, sir. I think in the long run, it'll save us in the long run because it is my thinking that we will not have to be replacing massive rooms. We would just go in there and replace the tiles which are needed to be replaced. Also, it'll probably cost us less in installation because the tiles are easier to install than the sheet, the carpets.
But I think, could you clarify the $50,000? Do you expect it to be a saving right now, or do you expect to spend it all?
No, sir. I expect to spend the $50,000. I expect the savings to come later on.
Okay. So, and be able to replace five tiles instead of having...
To replace the whole... Okay. Yes, sir. And respect Lee's Faculty Four, which is what we've been using in this building for the last four or five bids that we did on this carpet. But we want to try. If you notice, the library at LHS has carpet tiles in there. We replaced them seven, eight years ago with that. Other than the colors, nothing I'm choosing, it has held up real well. So, we hope that this selection will be a lot better.
So, because it's that Yankee blue, is that the...
I didn't want to go there, but yes, that's probably right.
Okay, I make a motion, and we approve the bid from Libertyville Tile and Carpet in
the amount of $76,064 and reject alternate bid number one.
Second. Any discussion? And you'll be coming back for the second bid, right?
Yes, we will. Now that we did get your approval, we'll have a bid opening on the 15th of June, and we'll have a recommendation at our next.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Delipali?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munsteh?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Delipali?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munsteh?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and the second item, Information Technology. Are you the right person, Jesse?
No, sir. That's...
Who's the decision?
The young lady to the left.
Okay.
We released bids for 315 compact HP computers. This is an annual process, and we received 11 bids. Of the 11 bids, the lowest bid was from Hartland, and we'd like to recommend approval of the purchase from Hartland this evening in the amount of $190,575.
And yes, that is part of our technology plan?
That is correct. This is part of our technology plan. There are going to be some additional purchases, too, that will be made throughout the year. But the bulk of the purchases this evening...
So, that's part of our normal replacement cycle built into our technology plan.
Right. They're replacing computers that are at least five years old.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roughly what percentage of our computer population is that?
That would be about, I would say, maybe about 30 to 40 percent.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Rudy?
Aye.
Munsteh?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Ratsor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes the FNF Committee report.
This seems to be the night where I can't follow the agenda. So, I'd like to go back again. This doesn't routinely happen to our board members. Back to... No, this was me. Agenda item 2C. Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak? I read ahead and didn't see anybody, but I just want to make sure. Okay, seeing none, we can move then ahead to number six. Any of you guys ever had a financial review of that? They often go, they start on page two, then you go back to page one. Okay. All right. There is no update from the property committee as we did not meet. Is there an update from CDOL?
Yes, we are meeting on June 8th. Our quarterly meeting to... And this time, we'll be voting on the proposed budget. So, I wanted to give you the information that I have, so that you are aware of it. First of all, they've asked that we amend the fiscal year 11 budget in three of the funds. The education fund. It appears the original FY11 budget did not include the expected revenue or expenditures from the ERA grant, and so they want to amend that. Approximately $12 million will be added to the budgeted revenues and expenditures. Transportation, they want to increase expenditures in the amount of $261,000, an increase in transfer amount of $400,000. Side instruction fund, the expenditures will increase... The increase to match the expected actual construction expenditures, which will be increased by approximately $1,250,000. So, that will be presented for approval. And the tentative budget for fiscal year 12 will be $72,187,568 is a combination of all the funds. $60 million in the education fund, around $61 million. Well, do you know that... Yes, I'm trying to do that.
I just... I'm just curious on the percentages to help.
Yeah, I don't have that exact information, but I certainly can have it for you.
Just an FYI. The first full year that they have in new schools. What was that issue?
Yeah, they... They're running it up and running. You know, they had a presentation and talked about the executive board putting forth several budgets on certain scenarios based on how much revenue, how many payments they think that they're going to receive from the state. And I think the CDOL administration wanted to have the presumption be that they would only receive two of the four payments, but the executive board wanted to present the budget as though they would receive three of the four that they're owed. So, I'm a little... It's a little more complicated than I'm prepared to try to explain, but...
Yeah, I'm a little unsure as to what's going to happen with the state and some federal plans. I know everybody's being super cautious about how much they would put in the budget this time. So, your question of increase the last year's...
They also did some... They also did layoffs. They've done a huge number, 80 more teachers. So, they're really down to, for one thing, the salaries of the teachers that are left are, of course, at the highest level, but they can be...
many payments we're going to get, what the timeliness of those payments are. And as a special education district, they're particularly sensitive to that dynamic. So, that gives you an idea of the difficulty that school districts have budgeting across the state. The other thing that we've done over the last year and this year, this coming school year, will be the fourth of a fifth-year plan to take back some services in the district. We have hired some of the staff from CDOL in our own district who have demonstrated excellence. And it's often, depending on what the program is, it's often less expensive for us to run those programs when we are able to do that. And some programs we cannot do at that level. But we'll be looking at taking one more program back next year with several staff members. And then, that will probably be the limitation of what we're going to be able to do economically in our district. But overall, I will tell you that CDOL does a fabulous job, I think, in this county, serving our students that have special needs. And none of the local districts could do that independently with some of the services that they offer. And their superintendent is retiring at the end of the year. And Karen reported earlier that they have hired a new superintendent. We've had an opportunity to meet him for the first time. And we're excited about the opportunity to work with him to make the district a continuing success for all of our students.
Good. Okay. Any else? All right. Thank you. There is nothing else to report on Illinois Association of School Boards, other than we already covered the renewal of the membership earlier. And so, that's, that's it. Any other comments? Please. Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I will.
Second?
Second.
For all the favors, say aye.
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 Cool.
Thank you very much. Have a nice night.